If anybody is here for the public hearing for 175 Patricia Drive that will not be heard this evening, the only item that we have on our public hearing agenda is the 824 review for Juliet Low Park.
Well, I'll tell you what, when I see this many people at a zoning commission meeting, I think we're having a good night because look at times where the whole place has been full.
Yeah, I can imagine.
There is a sign up sheet up here at the podium, so if you would like to speak, if you could please sign your name.
An address?
An address, please. Thank you. Okay, last time before we start the meeting, if you're here for the 175 Patricia Drive special hearing, the petition that is postponed and it will not be heard this evening. Okay. The only one that we will hear tonight is the 824 review for Juliet Low Park. If you want to speak this evening on that, there's a sign up sheet at the podium and it's going to get picked up in a couple of seconds, so please, if there's anybody else, come up and sign in. Okay, I'm going to call to order the Stratford Planning Commission public hearing to hear the petition for an 824 review for Juliet Low Park in Stratford. The petition is from the Town of Stratford Public Works Department for proposed improvements for Juliet Low Park. Just for the record, Commissioner Harold Watson is here, Commissioner James Vigliotti is here as chair, Pat Petuski, I am present. Absent is Daniel Semft and Commissioner John Staley. We also called the two alternates who didn't get back to us, so I guess they're not available. So that's who's here to hear the first petition. Before calling for the first petition, I'd like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is the policy of this commission to have questions of the petitioner directed through the chairman. The chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued at another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at a continued hearing. This is probably the largest crowd we've had of all of our public hearings combined, so thank you very much, all of you, for coming. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on March 6th, 2019, and March 13th, 2019. The petitioner is present. If you could come up and please state your name and address or your position with the town. We don't have to do that.
Good evening. I'm Renee Sarah. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works for the Town of Stratford. My address is 50 Philip Drive, Shelton, Connecticut, 06484. What we are proposing is changing the use of Juliet Low Park to include a newly erected pavilion, 54 by 42 feet. That would also include water and electricity brought to the pavilion, also grills brought to the pavilion. We are also proposing new sidewalks that would connect that pavilion to the smaller round pavilions that are already in existence at the park. We are also proposing the addition of a splash pad, completely fenced in, with a surface of 60 by 38. Also included would be restroom facilities, and a part of that restroom facilities would be a section of the building that would house the equipment for the splash pad. And we are also proposing a parking lot, or small parking spaces, 17 total parking spaces, specifically to accommodate handicap individuals who would like to utilize the park. And that's it in a nutshell.
Just to put a clarification on the request originally submitted to Jay Kavansky from Shawn Plum, the concrete pad is supposed to be 35 by 15, and you're saying it's 54 by 42?
That's the pavilion. The pavilion is 54 by 32. The splash pad is 60 by 38.
Okay, so this is a typographical area.
I don't know where those numbers came from.
It's in a memorandum, Shawn Kavansky from Shawn Plum, on January 25th, 2019.
I'm not sure where he has that number from, but that was the design of the pavilion originally. It's never changed.
Just for a quick, well, it's a change from what we have, but okay, it's a 54 by 42?
Yes, that was what was designed by the architect.
And the picture that we have here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that is what you're proposing?
That is what I'm proposing.
Okay. For the general public, did everybody get a copy of this? There's extra copies by the podium if you do not have.
Not on. So if you want to get a copy of what we're looking at, so you know what you're looking at, or what we're talking about at the same time.
I'm sorry? We did. It can go in different locations at the same park, but the gist is the same, the same amenities in the park.
Okay, what I'd like to do next is have the members of the public who want to comment in favor or opposition to the petition, we have a list of names that if you want, you can come up. If Renee would please stay in the room. Go be comfortable, but stay in the room. Okay. Okay, and then we'll call you up. Please state whether you're in favor of the petition or not in favor of the petition, and then you can make your comments. Any questions that are directed to the petitioner should go through the chair. So make your comments or questions to myself, and we will go then to the town representatives for an answer. The first person to sign up is Mr. William M. Boyd. If you could come up and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm William M. Boyd. I'm at 681 Cedric Avenue, directly adjacent to the park. This is my fourth or fifth time speaking on this behalf, on behalf of this proposal. I am against this proposal, and some of the reasons why, just looking at some of these measurements, 60 feet by splash typographical areas, 60 feet by 38 feet, is that correct? Is that what you have? Okay, 60 feet is wider than this entire room. This room is about 40 feet, so 60 feet is wider than this room, 38 feet would be the width. That park is not that big. So when you couple the pavilion with the scope of the size that you said, the splash park, parking, there's no park there. And I did some analysis in the last couple of days, and especially today, seven trees have to be, seven or eight trees have to be removed in order to do the splash pad and just the parking. So we discussed this on March 7th at Bird's Eye of flooding, traffic impact, space. Now, one question I did have for the board, and I guess you guys can answer it later or now, have you, we're looking at photos of this from the, from a bird's eye view, looking down, it looks large. When you're there, it's not this big. So my question is, have you guys been there and walked it to kind of speck it out to see, ooh, wow, this is kind of large for this space? That was one of my questions. Second question, just last week, right across from Juliet Low Park, there was a minivan driving down the street, crossed over the line and hit the neighbor who's directly across from the park, hit his two cars and knocked them on the curb, because the road is not four wide. If you park on each side, two cars can't pass. It's not wide enough. So we are saying these different things repeatedly. We are saying there's not enough space there for a project of this size, and as a young lady, she didn't say it tonight, but at Bird's Eye, they had all the placards and boards up. They said other towns would be coming in, Milford, Shelton, and other towns would be using the park during the day. That area of the street cannot handle that level of traffic. I don't know whose idea this is or was. My proposal is, slow it down, stop it, rethink it, re-measure it out, reduce the band shell so that you can have 40 or 50 for a cookout. Even that's an overload to even try to park there, even with the parking spaces. So I don't know if that was my three minutes, or I guess we have three minutes? Okay. So lastly, I am in agreement with possibly having the park at Bird's Eye feel. Because of the existing infrastructure, you don't have to do as much as you would have to do at Juliet Low Park. Juliet Low Park, you would have to redo that whole feel, and it'll never be the same. At Bird's Eye School, it's already set up. It has parking. You don't have to chop up a parking. So to me, in some of the analyses that they're making to Public Works, they're saying it's going to cost more, $600,000, to put the park at Bird's Eye, but it would cost, at Johnson House, but it would cost less to put it at Juliet Low, which makes no sense, because you don't have to put a parking lot at Johnson House. It's already parking, all you're doing is putting up the parking bathrooms and netting. So I would like them to do those costs over, so we could see how they arrived to that $600,000. That's all my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg Can, 234 Klondike Street.
Good evening, Commissioners. Greg Can, 234 Klondike Street, current District 5 Councilperson. If, with your permission, I'd like to address most of my comments to the audience. It's, the first comment-
We've never done that before. It goes through the chair.
Okay, Chair.
But I'm sure they can hear you.
Very good. I'd first like to congratulate the neighborhood individuals from the South End that got together to form what I believe they're calling the Voices of the South End. And this type of neighborhood association is exactly appropriate for advocating for that particular neighborhood. Other neighborhoods, like the Elm Street area with the old Stratford, the Lordship Improvement Association, they don't always get their way, but they have, but when a neighborhood organizes and gets its individuals out, they find a way to have their voices heard and to get ahead of the process so that any decisions made by the town are more in line with what they believe is appropriate for their neighborhood. I wanted to speak to community activism, as demonstrated by the current individuals of the South End Voices Association. Martin Luther King, he did not stay at the pulpit. He marched, he was an activist. President John F. Kennedy said, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what can you do for your country. Well, that concept also goes to our neighbors. We want to work with our neighbors to assure that our town, in each level of government, is effectively representing what our interests are. So in that regard, again, congratulations to the individuals for coming out and speaking tonight. So I wanted to add some perspective, that the splash park is a tiny example, although a visible example, of what our town officials are currently working on. That there's many projects in the works that will impact the South End. There's flood mitigation projects, one of which is at the Army Engine Plant to try and put up a berm, a dike if you will, to reduce the level of water that may get into areas of the town. Ferry Boulevard has also got a same project in place. There's development on Honeyspot Road. There's development on Lordship Boulevard.
Excuse me, Mr. Can. I'm watching your time, and none of these have anything to do with the 824 review that we're having a public hearing, so if you could get to that part, I'd appreciate that, so other people can speak.
So in regards to the park itself, just like to ask all the individuals to listen to some of the concerns that were raised by the town. The cost of a large splash park, such as was originally proposed, versus a smaller one, whether that splash park will get flush toilets and a bathroom amenity or not, whether that park will be open during school. We want to think about the concerns of the town and integrate those concerns into our counterproposal, so that we're not butting heads so much, but we're rather collaborating so each side is listening to each other. So at the end of the day, we have park improvements that meet the objectives of the neighborhood, but also meet the strategic planning vision for the town. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alicia Excellent.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Alicia Excellent, and I live on 708 Cedric Avenue. Can you hear me now? Sorry. I am against the proposition of building a splash park, because I live right directly...
State your name and address, please.
No, I mean, did you record it? Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. We've got it. Thank you.
All right. I'm against the building of splash park. I live directly across from Juliet Low Park, and if any of my neighbors have any guests and their cars are parked along the street, it is very difficult to get out of my driveway. And to reiterate the point that Mr. Boyd had said, that if two cars are parking along the sides of the street, it's very hard to get up and down the street, so the streets really are not wide enough. And there's going to be towns from all over coming to the park, so there really isn't enough space. And I do agree with the idea to have the splash park at Bird's Eye, because there already is an infrastructure there, and they could just put the park there instead of on Low Park. And also, in the summertime, sometimes people have cookouts there, and it is a bit of like a noise, but it may happen like once or twice throughout the summer, but if there are children there every single day, there's going to be quiet and noise, and then there'll be people coming there from like all over. So the noise will be a bit up along with the heavy traffic. So I do not believe that the location is a great idea, because as Mr. Boyd had said, it is not as big as the picture makes it out to be. If the drawings were drawn to scale, then you would see that this is not a feasible plan. And that's just all. Also, there's been quite a few like car accidents on my street, and I always noticed like parts of like broken glass or ripped up tires. And one day, like someone hit my neighbor's tree just by trying to get turned. They got onto the curb and hit the tree, and yet they drove off and left like parts of the car behind. So I feel that if there's a lot of children running around, the chances of them getting hit by cars is much higher, so I do not feel like this is a safe area to have such a park. And that's all I'd like to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Vigliotti, yes.
I just want to clarify, is the proposal to move it to Johnson House or Bird's Eye? Because they mentioned, and those are two different places.
Yeah, I think, correct me, it's Johnson House. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got a little moved in the wrong direction. I do have a question for Renee Sarah. Are these drawings to scale?
Yes, they are.
So they are to scale?
Yes. What's the scale?
What's the scale? I don't see it on here. I don't know if anybody else does.
I think it's just because the practice, you lost it in...
I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that the splash pad is only going to take up half of the park. The park itself isn't that large, so half of the...
Well, it can be deceiving, but that's why I asked for the, what the scale is. Can you get us that information?
I don't know if I can get it right, it's on my way back to you.
Can I ask one other question of Renee Sarah? The splash park, I'm sorry, according to what you turned in, which I cannot find, was 60, 60 by 30, I believe?
60 by 30.
By 38. What is the size of the Long Brook Park, the splash park?
I told precisely the actual pad is 1254 feet. The fence in area being 3,100 square feet. 3,100. 3,450. All right, I just, we'll get back to the public hearing. Shawn Excellent.
Could I have a question of the Chair?
Sure.
What we're presented here, normally when we get a package of anybody doing any kind of major redevelopment in a subdivision, or specifically for planning in a park area, we would be getting something that would say, drawings that would show scale, elevations, traffic reports, what trees are being cut down. None of that is indicated on what we have here, so it makes it very hard for us to make intelligent decisions as to what we're seeing in this. I just want to make that very clear to everybody. It's hard for us to make rational decisions in terms of how this relates to the plan, our plan of conservation and development. That puts us at a great disadvantage, and I'm sorry that it's coming from the town in that way, putting us in this, in this position.
Okay. Point well taken. Shawn Excellent.
Hello, my name is Shawn Excellent. I live on 708 Cedric Avenue. My, where I live, I'm facing, like basically this is the park right here, so I'm looking right at it, and this street is a tight turn, and like cars are going like 10 times over the speed limit. And I know, because when I was crossing the street retrieving a ball years ago, I was hit by a car. So we're talking just one kid crossing the street, and if this is a part that's going on for the week, you're talking a lot of kids running around, and we're not going to pay attention to the streets because, you know, we're having fun. And with cars now being at speed limits, that means multiple kids getting hit by cars. I'm not the first, and I promise you that I'm not going to be the last if this goes on in this tight space. That's the point that I have, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize if I ruined this. Agatha Mezil? Did I say that close? Agat, okay.
Agat Mezil, 708 Cedric Avenue. I understand you're trying to bring amusement to the South End, but I'm against this project at Juliet Park. The only reason, because of safety. We all know safety is always first. My son, at the age of six years old, was hit by a car while playing on his ball in my driveway. His ball just won, and he tried to catch it, and he got hit. And that boy was hit in front of my house and was sent under a parked car, to under a parked car of my neighbors. And he was in the hospital, had surgery, luckily is alive today, and you all see him. This is a big safety issue. This is not as easy as it shows on paper. You have to live it to see it, because in front of my driveway, if when they have the party over the summer, I understand we all want to have fun, and I can deal with it. What I do, I don't enter my driveway. I park anywhere on the street and I wait it, because before 9:30, I know it's dark, everybody's going to go home. So now I go back and I pull my car. Yes, I can deal with that a few times a year during the summer, if people come and have fun, but to have to deal with it every day and for me to hear and go back to the stress of another kid got hit or leave, lost their life, for a mother to put on to this, it's not going to be fun, because at that time I was at work, when I received a phone call and had to run to Bridgeport Hospital, where my son was brought in by ambulance and have to go to surgery, all this, we know all. So he spent nine days, and luckily, he got, is able to walk again. This site is not a good site. Now, talking about flooding, myself, before the tree cutting, I have a truck, and to enter, the water, I have to just really take my time, and if a car is parked on the other side, I have to wait, because I don't want to get hit. The reason is, I have the post that is on the side of my driveway, and if I go, boom. If somebody got, could pay attention, walk on that street, especially at nighttime, you could see how many tires is on the sidewalk, because people make that turn, and they enter my driveway all the time, which is against the law, because you're not supposed to enter, but that's the way they can turn. And to back up Mr. Boyd, which is again, again, across the street from me, that's the same thing, a lot of times, so it is not, it is not a safety for all of us that live on that street or whoever would be coming, because more people maybe are involved, maybe from Milford, and just boom, we got to an accident because somebody backing up or some, there is no space. It looked good, it looked nice on paper, but you have to go in that little small area they call Juliet Park to see it, because Juliet Park should stay as a restful where people feel tired, because I see a lot of people, they sat down, they talk, the kids, they come, they meet, something like that, just to relax, release your stress, but not a place to be busy like that. I'm probably against, this is a safety issue and we're all concerned in Cedric Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the end of the list that we have. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of?
I'm not speaking in favor.
Well, let's start with this first. Is there anyone going to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in favor? Okay. Now, if- Now, if, is there anyone who has not spoken who wants to speak against? Please come to the podium and give your name and address. And please say it slowly and clearly because you're not on our list, so we have to add you.
Yes, I apologize, I did come a few minutes late.
That's okay.
So my name is Jessica Ricco, that's R.I.C.C.O., and I live at one four seven Shanley Street. So I live in the street right in back of the park. So the backyard of the park is my, my street. So I am against it and the reason why, um, I have two reasons. The first reason is parking and traffic, and the second reason is also the noise. Now, like the previous person that said when they spoke, that we're all for having fun, but currently the park is under, currently the park does have events or get togethers a couple times throughout the summer. And I know every summer they have a big South End Community Day, which is a great awesome day, the police department and other people come out and support it. But on that particular day, every year, for the last seven years that I've been in my home, I know that, okay, it's South End Day because the cars are now parked on my street. So that just goes to show how much parking is an issue because not only are they parking on Sedgwick, they're also parking on Wood End Road and also on Shanley Street. So if that's only one time out of the summer, then I'm like, okay, South End Day, so I know that I have to park somewhere else, or I know I have to wait, or I know that the parking is an issue. So I just can't imagine that being an every single day to do. Not only that, but I also urge you guys to drive down Sedgwick, drive down Shanley, because all of the homeowners or the people that are renting these spaces also park their cars out on the road. A lot of cars can't park into, can't park in their driveways. If they have two cars, they have three cars, if they have kids that are also driving, if there's families that have houses that have two or three cars, they're parked out on the road. It's not a big double, people don't have double driveways, they're single driveways in that area. There's also a fire hydrant out in front of, on Sedgwick, so that's also one less spot that a car can park that, that wants to utilize the place. So I think parking is definitely a huge issue. The second one is also noise. Now, I know that we did say that everyone's for Johnson, I am also for Johnson. The reason why I'm for Johnson is because it's a school, there's huge parking. Not only is it just one school, there's three schools. There's Honey Spot, there's Johnson, there's Vicky Soto. The parking lot is huge. There's a parking lot they can park at Honey Spot and walk to the park, they can park at Johnson and walk to the park. Parking is a non-issue if it is at Johnson. Not only is parking not an issue at Johnson, but the noise level. Throughout the summer, there's football, there's cheerleading. The people that are currently living in the Johnson surrounding streets are used to hearing the noise because that's what, that's what they're accustomed to because that's what their lifestyle is. I purchased my home in a residential area where there, there's not noise. There's, you know, I have neighbor on the side, neighbor to the left, neighbor across the street. At Johnson, you know that you're purchasing a home across from a school, it's to be expected that there's going to be noise. So I think that the noise is an issue, I think that the parking and the actual space itself is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone, who else, who, could you come to the podium, say your, your name and your address, please?
Good evening. My name is Rosanne, R.O.S.A.N.N.E., Neary, and is a Nancy, E.R.I. I reside at one twenty-five Holmes Street, H.O.L.M.E.S. Street. I am dead set against the park being at Juliet Low. For all of the reasons that the previous speakers have said. The last speaker hit a point that is probably the most salient. Johnson is the ideal place for this. Football goes on there. As she said, neighbors in that, in that area move near schools. They knew children were gonna be playing there. One, parking. Also, people who bring their children for football or all of the other sports that go on there, some of them have younger children. And while those children are, are performing their sporting events, they can go to the, to the splash park and let the younger ones play there. So that they have someplace else to be rather than sitting there watching, you know, three and, two and three and four-year-olds really are not all that interested in baseball and football. But they certainly would be interested in the splash pad. Also, the school is, the area surrounded by school is equipped for that. It's equipped for children, there's even a playground there. So the point of having it at Juliet Low, I've lived in Stratford over forty years. Wood End Road is always a problem, the people speed down it, and it's not wide enough. And if I were living there, I didn't move, I wouldn't have moved there to have constant noise. If I moved nearer a school, it's because I love children and I don't mind hearing it. But the parking there is gonna be horrendous, it's unfair to the residents there. They can't park there. And I know what that park looks like and putting all of these things on this park, I can't even imagine it. And we're taking trees down to do that. Why would we do that? We can put other things at Juliet Low, we could have a nice gazebo, some picnic benches, some grills, that would not impact the area. And of course, the flooding situation. The ideal place for this is at Johnson, certainly not Juliet Low. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who would like to speak against this project? Come to the podium.
Good evening, Paul Taveras, thirteen seventy-two South Avenue. I have some flyers here that I'd like to submit for the record, if I may. And Madam Chair, if I may, would it be all right if I read some of this into the record?
Sure. Sure. Thank you. Just don't go.
Oh, just go ahead and give me the hook, anytime you want. Uh, I'm also in favor of the splash park being at Johnson. Uh, I just made some notes here. But I also want to clarify that Juliet Low would be left as it is except for just a few items for, for picnic items. I'm just gonna read that. Okay, this specific request for Juliet Low, be a small picnic pavilion, as you can see Same as pavilion number three at, uh, Short Beach. It'll have a cement pad and it'll be enough to accommodate fifty people and should be close to the four tables and benches. Two grills, fixed, one big mouth garbage and recycling container, that's fixed. The picnic pavilion should have electric, water provided, and being essential to this plan. Two or three more picnic tables and benches uncovered, spread out on the grounds under the trees with no additional services needed. No need for bathroom facilities because the porta potties would be fine. No additional lightings to encourage any use after dark or encouraging any hangout, the location being a hangout location. On-street parking only, no added parking, no additional fences, no need for removal of any trees, landscape leveling if needed. Now, for the Johnson location, for the original plan of the splash park, until be open only when school is open. Splash park size per quote in the original design, which is four thousand five hundred fifty square foot splash pad, per the Raindrop layout, uh, as stipulated in number one thirty-four twenty-nine eleven. No bathroom facilities, again, porta potties would be fine, okay? Netting may be overkill. As you'll see on some of these diagrams, there's trees there that will definitely be a barrier for any fly balls, foul balls being hit there, okay? Um, and then, there's no need for those trees to be removed. No additional lighting, again, to discourage any kind of use after dark or as a loitering location. Parking's already established at Johnson. No picnic pavilion requested or needed. No shade pavilion. Plenty of trees there. And as far as the crosswalk on Sedgwick, the crosswalk is already there. And so there's no need because people be coming from the parking lot directly getting access to the splash playground. On this first one, you'll see the pavilion, which is pretty much the size of pavilion number three, just at Short Beach. The next page shows the layout of the splash pad, which one side being for the little types.
Question?
This group is for...
That's for Juliet Low.
For Juliet Low.
Not at Johnson. As I just read in the record, there's no need for that. With plenty of shade trees there. So that pavilion, yes. Mr. Watson, this for...
For the short beach or the medium size?
Uh, the medium size, no need for large. The large size is, is, is just the small size. And as you see on the next page, you see the layout of the splash park as originally planned by Raindrop. Four thousand five hundred fifty square foot, and you see some other of the sections The first quote for the park was three hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, five cents. The estimated cost in twenty nineteen is three hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty cents. You'll see an aerial view of where the splash, of the ideal location of the splash park. You'll see there's trees lined on each side and it's in a really good location there at the ball fields. Again, the page with the crosswalk, you see the crosswalk is already established and the fact that there's parking already established on the side, we're talking about a measure of safety. There'll be no kids crossing that street on Sedgwick. They'll be able to go right from the parking lot, right into the splash park. Here, you see the backstops.
May I ask another question? I'm sorry, is this area currently fenced from Cedric? Is, am, am I seeing a fence that's, or is that just the sidewalk?
No, that's the fence.
Yeah, that, that fence there's, correct.
So you, people would be entering primarily from the parking lot to the right of it?
Correct.
Using that parking and entering?
Yes, as the Google, uh, photos shows here.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
And I think is, I, I think that's the ideal spot. Again, um, I was a fireman for many years and, uh, I can tell you stories about kids and cars. They don't mix and we want to have the most ideal location. Of course, no place is perfect, but we want an ideal location. And we don't want kids also to be having access to a park where alcohol will be allowed to be served. That's another thing that doesn't mix. We want to keep them separate. Um, and I think that most of the folks that spoke here, uh, are definitely in line with the fact that that is the most ideal location. I'd like to see this park in its original design come to fruition. Uh, over twenty years ago, we were supposed to have had a pool, it never happened. We in the South End would like to feel included for once. And so I think I speak for all of us here that we'd like to see this, uh, park be built, built the way it was specifically designed. And, uh, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, just to clarify, if anybody came in late, the petition for one seven five Patricia Drive will not be heard this evening? Oh, if you came for that, I'm sorry, it wa, it's been postponed, so it won't be heard this evening. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak against? Go ahead, come on up. Come on. Please state your name and address.
My name is Stacy Taveras and I live at thirteen seventy-two South Avenue. And I am against the Juliet Park. And I just wanted to reiterate that the Johnson House was, that area was originally a park and the playground equipment was, um, donated by the Rotary. So the only reason why it was taken down was because it was too old. So that was, um, pretty much a perfect place in which, um, a splash park should be, um, put. So that is what I wanted to say and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Chair, come on up.
My name is Anne Emerson, six forty-two Cedric Avenue, Stratford. Um, I know that we've talked a lot about the traffic on Cedric. Um, I do live on Cedric and it pretty much is a three-car road. If people are parked on the left and the right and you're trying to drive down, it's, it's a zigzag to try to get to, um, Honey Spot. Um, but no one has mentioned, um, Wood End. Um, there is a bus stop right on the corner of Cedric and Wood End. Um, there's a lot of traffic. My concern is that people, um, are going to park on Wood End on either side and there's gonna be people walking back and forth across the street. Um, also, there's no crosswalks. And I can tell you from experience that, um, most people don't even use the crosswalks, they just walk across the street. Um, my son was hit by a car, um, because he was walking behind Stratford High, um, one evening and he was between two crosswalks. So, um, and my also experience is that when children cross the road, they don't look because they're gonna be looking at, oh, let's go, let's go to the park. So, um, that, that really is my concern, it's, it's, it's a safety issue. When people do have the picnics on the, on the weekends, it is, um, it's only once or twice a year, but it is noisy. And, um, if you don't have air conditioning like we don't have and it's a hot day, the noise just comes right into my living room because I'm only a couple houses down. Um, so, um, if you could take that into consideration too, is the noise, um, it wouldn't just be one day or two days or three days out of the year, it would be every day, all day. Um, and, um, you know, if it is a nice day and we want to open our windows, we're gonna be, we're gonna be hearing that noise all day. Um, my last concern is, um, who's gonna be watching the park at ni, I mean, are there, someone's gonna be watching the park at night to make sure that kids aren't down there or people aren't down there using the bathrooms and...
Well, I think I can answer that the bathrooms would be closed at a certain time. And I know from a splash park that they are on timers. So if you close at dusk, at eight o'clock, they, all the water and everything would go off at eight, eight P.M.
Okay, and my last question is, um, I don't see anywhere where there would be a fence around the entire park, is that, is that not a plan or the, the fence would only be around the splash pad?
Uh, let me ask.
The fence would only be around the splash pad?
Only around the splash pad. Anything else?
Uh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak against? Come on up and please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Diane Gazini, I live at five ninety-two Cedric.
Was that a G?
G.
Okay, got that? Where's the address?
I'm about eight houses from Wood End.
What is the address, though?
Five ninety-two Cedric.
She was just writing it, your name, so, thank you.
And, you know, Sebus is on one corner and the Chinese restaurant, that's a busy spot. And then, when there is a bus stop on the corner of Wood End and Cedric, and then when you turn onto Cedric, there's a fire hydrant and a big AT&T cable box. And it is very residential. And I walked in the park and there's over thirty-five trees and we were put in the flood zone after Hurricane Sandy. So I don't know if you're planning on cutting down trees.
Renee, are we planning on cutting down trees?
Um, depending on the final design, I think there will be some trees removed. What I'm proposing here is just one look at it, but it can be put in different locations on, on, you know, on the property, doesn't it?
Okay, so there probably will be some trees that will be cut, we just don't know how many trees.
Exactly. Depending on the wood, the size of the splash pad and something, the size of the situation will vary to a larger, smaller, depending on the larger, smaller.
Okay, thank you.
And the fifteen...
May I ask a question of her about this?
Uh, can you?
I'm sorry.
If, if you could ask the speaker, because later we'll be able to talk to...
Okay.
The town, okay? So let's finish with the speaker, thank you.
And then I think there's fifteen to twenty parking spaces planned on the property, which I don't think...
I believe, they're seventeen.
Seventeen is not enough. I mean, if you go to Stratford Academy Johnson House, there's a full parking lot and the neighbors are already used to, you know, kids there and the school. So I think the Johnson House would be the better choice.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this petition? Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this petition? Is there anyone who is neither in favor nor opposed but wishes to provide comments on this petition? Is there anyone who is neither in favor nor in opposition but who wishes to provide comments on this petition? Hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just so people. Can I ask you to change that to closing the petition?
I'm sorry. I move that we close the petition.
Is that okay, second?
Uh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, now we get to close. Mr. Watson?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
With thanks to our audience.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vigliotti, all in favor?
Aye.
It's real easy when there's only three of us. I can count that, aye. And I would also like to thank all of you for coming. What will happen next is we're going to take a very brief break, and then the commissioners will have questions of the town, I'm sure. I, well, Mr. Watson already told me he's going to have questions of the town. So, we're just going to take like a one-minute, two-minute break, okay? And then we'll be right back and start the meeting again.
I'm so happy to see all those people in the audience.
Okay, we'll get started. If everybody could have a seat. If everyone could have a seat, so we could get started. I'll get this by the end of my term. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission Administrative Session on March nineteenth at seven fifty-one P.M. And I would like to entertain a motion to take off the table, the eight twenty-four review for Juliet Low Park. Motion by Mr. Vigliotti, second by Mr. Watson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, it's easy with three people. Okay. So, I'll open this up to questions and of the commissioners of the petitioner. Who'd like to go first? Are you on? Okay.
I'm going to try to do this as efficiently as I can. I've been taking notes from the things I've heard from the people in the audience. I first want to say thank you to everybody coming out and showing your support, and thinking about this in very, very intelligent ways. It's part of what we're trying to do in planning, is to get more people involved in their own communities. Each of us represent two districts in this town, so, but we're happy, we are for the whole town in terms of what we're doing. Let me first say, not for nothing, but there are two mothers who talked tonight about their sons being hit by cars. The first thing that we need to do is say, what is safe for us to do in this park? I, I, as a planning commission, we look at those issues of safety. It's one of our major things that we are given responsibility for. So, normally, when any subdivision comes to us, the first thing we ask is, is the town, safety of the town impacted? Legally, that's one of our first responsibilities. So, I want to make that a real big point. And I do not mean to fault Public Works, they are, they are trying their absolute best in a situation to move us forward. I think it's great. I think it's great the community is speaking up. My hope is, is that we come up with a much better project because of it. I entered into understanding and politics when this splash park was going into the Johnson area. I thought it was a done deal two years ago. We were just waiting on funding. So, quite honestly, I am surprised to find that it suddenly has moved. When I heard that it was being considered for a new spot, it was like we spent years trying to get it into that other place with community approval and community involvement. So, that one is upsetting to me. But, I say to developers all the time, bring us specifics of what you want to do, because our job is to look at specifics. So, my question to Renee, Renee, and please, I don't mean this to be confrontational in any, any kind of way, but we, the, the information that we've received does not include any scale. It does not include any elevations. It does not include any cards from surrounding residents giving us their opinions, if they've signed off on it. It does not include any traffic reports, which would certainly say if there's any, been any accidents or any kind of children being hit. Let me just interject, I work on the Greenway, so I'm very familiar with all these issues when it comes to the Greenway. This hopefully will be a stop on the Greenway. So, I'm very concerned with, in terms of, of safety for children. The other thing is, planning works very hard on our, I'm going to get the name wrong, but on our stormwater flooding issues. And cutting down trees, I rail about this constantly, trees are the best storm drain in the world. They take their, their size, they absorb every time it rains. So, if you cut down seven trees, you are really impacting, in terms of inches, a community. So, we are requiring developers to move to where they're putting their houses, so that we don't lose trees. So, I think we've got to hold the town to the same accountability. Lighting, normally we require lighting, we want to know the candle watts, we want to know how long it's going to be on, we want to know how those lights are going to affect the neighbors. This proposal does not show us any of that. Maintenance, we require any builder who comes to us with a project to say, how is it going to be maintained? I do know from the splash park that is at, that's at Longbrook, that they have a real problem over there with the water getting mildewy, or moldy, because they are halfway under the trees. Well, our only option, if we go here, is to cut down the trees, which makes it even more of a wilderness, I mean, of a desert in that area. The biggest issue of all, and it concerns all of Stratford, is the new FEMA maps and flooding. Woodend Road at the opposite end, with a big rain, we are constantly seeing four to six inches worth of flooding on the, on that road. And we're not even into what they're saying in terms of the climate change is going to make it worse. So, I honestly feel like we need areas to mitigate some of these waters. So, if we're going to do anything in Low Park, it ought to be, we ought to be creating a rain garden. That would be a practical thing. We could put butter, butter, butterfly, all of that, we could develop a natural kind of thing there to make Low, to make Low a better, a better park for people to use. The other thing is that, I didn't know, and I heard tonight from an audience member, is that Johnson was a playground that we lost because it was not kept up with repair, which we've lost playgrounds all over town because they were not kept up. So, it's a good, it's a good thing that Department Public Works is trying to do, is to improve some of these facilities. This is another example of them trying to do the right thing. But I think that it would be good for them to go back and look at where that playground was, and maybe this is right where this should go. The other thing is that there is a noise problem, and that would be the same thing that we would be asking of any commercial development in town. Are your neighbors going to hate you? Well, we don't need any more animosity in Stratford about our town government. So, that's something we need to look at. The other part, the other thing is, and we're dealing with this all over town, so Low is not the only problem. We, right now, under our M four, am I right?
MS four.
MS four permits with the DOT. We have to decrease our water into all of our stormwater. We have to get our, keep the water from flowing freely down our streets into the bay, into the marsh. So, one of the ways that we do that is by creating pervious pavements, not impervious. We don't want any more paved parking lots in this town, because it prevents water from going, sinking into the ground. The only place it can go is into the Housatonic, or into the Sound. So, we are constrained in all ways, as a planning department, to find alternatives. Seventeen additional parking spots, doesn't sound like a lot, but I look at this, and it's probably close to a quarter of the property here. So, I question that. If I saw a plan that said, we're going to do a gravel lot here, we're going to do a lot that's pavers that are going to have a half an inch between all of them, and underneath it will be a rain storage facility, then I might say, this is great. But I question that, that should be part of any proposal, particularly in a town-owned public space. Because we can control our future if we do it right. And, again, water recycling. But I go back to the, the most critical thing that breaks my heart, of a kid getting hit. That's not the safest area. I drive all the time down that road. And it's a, Woodend, I ride my bike on Woodend Road. But I don't necessarily want to see a six- or a ten-year-old riding, until we can get bike lanes in there and make it safer. We don't want to encourage kids riding on that street all the time, because it's a, it is dangerous. So, I thank everybody who spoke. I hope that my remarks, Renee, that it will have some kind of meaning that you can take back to people. I don't think that we should say this is a dead project. I think this is a project that we should seriously consider redoing. My honest feeling is, is that the community would be more accepting, from what I hear, if we were to take Low and enhance it as basically a family gathering place, with, say, a better pavilion, and something that is a seasonal park, much more of a seasonal park, and we put this, which is much more intensive use, seasonally, into a place over by where there are adults around, other than the people that live there. Because a lot to ask people who live around there to take care of this, to worry about the kids, to worry about the noise, to do all that stuff. If we have it over by Johnson, there are adults all around who are getting paid. So, we can say to them, you know, it's partly your job. If only the grounds people at the parks will be able to take care and see to it better. And I ask that everybody look at Longbrook, and look at the problems there. Public Works, I know, does a good job, but they only, they rely on people calling them to say, this is not working, this is scuzzy, I don't want my kid there, dah dah dah. I mean, all that information, it's, it, it has a cost. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
I'm going to stop right there.
For now.
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to ask our town planner, Sismita Atata, to, did I say that right?
Atota.
Atota, Atota. Sismita's fairly new, so I haven't gotten to get her last name right, to speak about her comments on this project.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. First of all, to address Harold Watson's concerns about the, the level of drawings that are typically required of a public hearing item, can you hear me, versus this one? This is a section eight dash twenty-four review, and there is no statutory requirement for us to have any set of elevations or other drawings, because typically it is conducted as an administrative review. But because the commission chair requested a public hearing on this item, we accommodated it. But there is no statutory requirement for an aid to survey, or elevations, or any drawings for this. Having said that, I also am a trained architect, I have a bachelor's in architecture. So, when I look at a drawing, I can tell if it's out of scale, or if it's to the scale. When I look at the site, it's two seventy-five by one seventy-seven feet, and in that, they're proposing something of sixty by thirty-eight feet, which is like, you know, it doesn't occupy the entire of the site. But yes, it would have been more helpful if we had something to scale, or if the scale was mentioned, and that's a valid concern. Regarding the actual layout itself, and the concerns on parking and traffic, I would hate to, you know, be the devil's advocate here, but my planning knowledge tells me that this is a localized park. It is not a regional park, or a city park. It's a neighborhood park. And the proposed improvement there is for children in the neighborhood, who can walk with their mothers during a hot summer day, and just enjoy the splash pad. There are seventeen parking spaces, two handicap and fifteen parking spaces. And during the daytime, when most people work, how many people actually get the chance to drive their kids by car, and, you know, jam up the traffic in and around the park? It's seasonal, it's typically in this, maybe on good weather days in spring, or in hot weather days in summer. In my understanding, it would actually help bring the residents together, interact with each other, have more social life. And when you talk about speeding or accidents that are happening around the site, that's something that has to be addressed by the town in terms of traffic calming on that street, if there is a proof that there have been accidents and children have been hurt several times. And that's a separate issue from the proposal itself. For me, based on what I see here, I've worked in places where they've had like splash pads, and like, I come from a city that had so many splash pads, in New Haven, very dense neighborhoods. But I haven't seen people, you know, bringing cars and, you know, parking everywhere on streets. I actually saw neighbors coming there and enjoying the splash pad on a hot, hot summer day. The moms especially, who stay at home, who can't find an opportunity to go outside somewhere, this is a real opportunity for them to just walk two streets, and just take the kid there, and have some fun with their other moms. And in terms of the site layout itself, the pavilion and the new sidewalk and the splash pad, actually pad, actual footprint, I see that it is more internal. It's not to the, facing the road per se, and it's fenced in to ensure that the children are more safe and secure. Regarding the concerns of stormwater, it's a park. Why do we need a rainwater garden, is what my thinking was. It's a park. A park has natural infiltration because of the lawns. And the lawns absorb the water before it goes onto the street, so that itself drains the water quickly. The removal of trees is what I'm concerned about. I wanna know which trees will be removed, if the final design is gonna be, you know, put out there, so that we know which ones are gonna be exactly impacted, if they're mature trees, is there gonna be a replacement on site elsewhere? Those are the concerns that I have.
Now, as the town planner, you also look at this from the standpoint of the POCD.
Yes, I did, and my report addresses that. So there is a section in 8-24 where we have to specify consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development. So it is consistent with the 2014 Town Plan of Conservation and Development. Specifically, it is consistent with the following objectives. That is, number one, to provide town residents with ample opportunities for recreation exercise. Number two, to organize and maintain the town's parks and open space systems so that needs are anticipated and budgeted. Number three, to use the parks and open space, including beaches, forests, trails, and marshes as tourist draws. And I, you know, again, I don't think this would be a regional park. This would be more localized, and I don't anticipate somebody from a different part of the town driving during the daytime. Maybe on Sundays and Saturdays, having extra police presence would help. But on normal weekdays, I don't anticipate a lot of traffic coming to this park on a summer day.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Renee, could you come to the podium, please, 'cause I do have some questions. First of all, one of the things that I got the first time I was elected to the Planning Commission was a little guidebook for 824 reviews. And one of it says, it's a little hint that says, "Involve the Planning Commissioner at an early stage." My question is, at what stage are we? Can we make changes to this, or where are we?
This is a preliminary design.
It's a preliminary design.
It's a preliminary design.
So if we make some modifications or recommendations, they can be considered?
Absolutely.
Okay. While you're there, I'll ask my questions. Do we know the square footage of the splash park that you are recommending in this?
I think I...
Because you gave me the square footage of Long Brook.
I gave you the square footage, and this one was 60 by 38, and I did the math, but I don't have my phone with me right now to tell you specifically what it is. But if you hold on one second, let me get my calculator.
Okay.
Oh, I think it's 2,280 square feet.
2,000?
280.
280.
Square foot.
Square feet. So if I've got this right, Long Brook is 1,250 square feet?
That's the actual pad itself.
Okay.
Now, if you...
And then there's a fence around it.
There's a fence around it with a concrete pad that goes completely around.
Which makes it 3,150 square feet.
That's correct.
Okay. The, I believe, one of our speakers said that the proposal from someone in the community was 4,050 square feet. And this is 2,280 square feet.
That's correct.
Is there any reason why a 2,280-square-foot splash pad could fit at Johnson Academy? Have you looked at that? Have you looked at any other location, or just Juliet Low?
Yes, we looked at other locations as well.
Where did?
One other location, Johnson.
Johnson House.
We did look at Johnson.
So you did look at Johnson House?
We did.
And the splash pad would fit at either Juliet Low or Johnson Academy?
That's correct.
Is that correct? So, because I've heard, well, it's gonna cost more to go to Johnson, but if it's the same size, there is no increase. It's just moving...
No, I mean, the purpose, I mean, the purpose of this whole 824 was, the project started out with the pavilion, and when we saw the pavilion there, we were going to have to change, come to an 824 to change the use of the park for the pavilion project. When you were enhancing the park for the pavilion, we thought, why not, there's space first, the splash pad and a restroom facility, so you would have a complete park, multi-use park. So that's why we came here with this design for this, also taking into consideration what we saw at Long Brook, where we had shortfalls. The pad itself, we've heard that about the, the surface, this is gonna be a different surface, so we're not gonna have that problem. There's also no coverings there, there were coverings here. There was the ability to have a restroom facility fitting within the budget of the pavilion and the splash pad to have it all under, in one location, so anybody who's using the pavilion would have access to the restrooms as well. And families would have access to the pavilions, there's two smaller ones and then this larger one, to use when they're using the splash pad to get out of the sun, have picnic areas, as well as the concrete pad, there'll be space around the concrete pad of the splash park, too.
So if we listen to the public and put the splash park and the bathrooms at Johnson Academy, there would be no extra cost or anything?
There, there is the cost of the netting. We have to put the netting...
Why do you need netting?
Because I am told that there's an over-35 league over there that uses the field. This is what we get from the Recreation Superintendent, and so we noticed this at Long Brook and had to install the 60-foot netting to keep the foul balls from going onto the splash pad. We would run into the same issue.
May I comment?
Please, let me. This is my area. First of all, the over-35 usually doesn't play at Johnson, except maybe once a year. They usually play at Bird's Eye, Worcester, and Short Beach. I know that because I was the Superintendent of Recreation for a long time. But even if they were there, let's say they are, they can only play on one field at a time because of the way they hit the ball. Trust me, as a softball player, I am sure if Mr. Semf were here, he would back me up. There are four fields there at which those, that team could play, that would have nothing to do with the splash park. So I, I think the netting is overkill, if that's the reason, because everybody else who uses it are the Cal Ripken League, which is Monday through Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday afternoon, and this is five-to-10-year-olds who couldn't come close to hitting over in that area if they dreamed about it. So save yourself some money. Don't put up the netting unless you have to. Long Brook, different, different thing. At Long Brook, men and high school boys are playing baseball. So it's a, it's a different age group, and they play there all the time. So that's why you have the problem with Long Brook, okay? But as far as the netting is concerned, I don't see how you would, would need that. But, Mr. Watson?
I'm just, everything I remember, 'cause I was on, I was on Parks Commission at that time, one of the problems that we had was from the neighbors with baseballs going into their windows. So the netting project came about because of complaints from local neighbors. It was not because of the splash park.
We did, at Public Works, we did get complaints from families using these splash pads with balls going...
The major reason for it, that it got funded, was a whole bunch of neighbors around there who didn't want their windows broken.
Absolutely.
But it is a different game that's being played. You know, I can understand looking at 35-year-olds and thinking maybe they could hit over to there, but if you put them on Diamond 1, 3, or 4, there's no way they could hit the ball there.
Yeah, that's just, that's a Recreation Superintendent call where they play. I just, I came here for the 824 just to focus on Juliet Low, just for use purpose, to change the, the purpose of the park for these added amenities.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean other locations can't be considered.
Can't be considered.
That's correct.
That's good to know. Let's talk about the picnic area. I know in one place, it's, well, you said it was 54 by...
That is correct, because when the design was submitted, the wrong numbers were picked up when they put in the memo. The, the numbers you have are the, the feet between the posts.
Okay.
That's why yours is different than mine. Mine has the actual square, the length and width of the pavilion itself.
Now, how does this compare to Short Beach number one, Pavilion Pavilion number one, the one you're proposing?
The architect was given Pavilion One as a guide.
Okay.
For size.
Okay. So it's matches?
It should match.
Okay. How many people can rent, or how many people are allowed at Short Beach Park, at Pavilion number one?
I'm sure you probably know that by the me. I wanna say it's, is it 200?
It's between 150 and 200, yes. Now, and this is supposed to be about the same size, right?
That's correct. That was what the instruction was to the architect in the meeting.
Okay. But that's something that could change.
Absolutely.
Correct. Here's my question. If, if you have 200 people and four people get in a car, you have 50 cars, and you have a parking lot for a maximum of 15, 17, something like that, that leaves some 35 cars that have to park on the street, and you have a bus stop there, so you lose two, three cars right there. You have a fire hydrant, as somebody said, so you lose a, a car there. So now you're putting lots of cars in the neighborhood, and that's just for the picnic pavilion, correct? We haven't even accounted for the kids or parents who might drive their kids here to the splash park. Can you see how it might be overkill?
I understand what you're saying, but when the project was presented to the architect, the individuals had said they wanted it to mirror Short Beach, so that's what it was built to that spec. And it was meant for, basically, again, the neighbors in the area to be able to walk and use.
Sure.
But it can be scaled back easily.
Yeah, 'cause if you, I think where the miscommunications occurred, that it was said to be Short Beach. But it wasn't said to be Short Beach either number two or number three. The architect was told number one, and that's, if you go back to the 2014 submittal to CDBG, which is where most of the funding is coming from, it will say a small 20 by 20 pavilion. So I don't know where, you know, it's four or five years later, miscommunications do happen, but I think you can hear from the general public that a Short Beach-sized pavilion is just too big for the space. It's, it's huge. Something that can handle 50 to 75, that's fine. I agree with Mr. Watson. I don't know why you need a parking lot at that point, because people could walk there or, you know, they could have a car or two somewhere along the street, but it wouldn't take up 35 spots on the street. I mean, you think about it, 35 spots, they'd be in Shanley Street and all the way down Sedgwick before, you know, everybody could get there. And that's if four people in a car. If there are more cars, you're never gonna fit them at Sedgwick and Wood End. And you already have heard the, the traffic issues, and I, you know, agree with, you know, I didn't know some people had gotten hit there. I had heard some of that. I'd also like to point out, have you, I, I heard something on March 7th, that you were looking at this as something to work with, kind of a synergy with the basketball courts on Wood End Road. Am I correct about that?
Well, just saying that if you're, it's in close vicinity to the basketball courts, so if you're utilizing the pavilion and you have kids that wanna play basketball, it's literally the next block down. So it's, it's close vicinity to a bunch of different amenities. That's what was said.
Okay. And that's understandable to, to a point, but I'd like to point out, the only drive-by shooting in Stratford in 2018 was at the Wood End Basketball Courts. So I don't think that synergy is really what we're looking for. I, I think that, you know, it's a different age group, totally different age bracket. The picnic pavilion, all picnic pavilions in Stratford allow alcohol, is that correct?
I don't know that.
It's a ordinance. I can tell you that, as the person who gave out the permits for a number of years. So if, if we allow this to have 100 to 200 people, those people could be drinking alcohol. And within, and some, maybe somebody could do the math, how many, how, what's the difference be, distance between the splash pad and the picnic table? You're the architect, so...
Sorry, what did you say?
What's the difference between the splash pad and the picnic pavilion?
You mean the distance or difference?
Distance, from here to here.
I think this is 60 by 38, that's 38, so roughly 25 feet or something like that.
So within 25 feet, you're gonna have 100 to 200 people who could be drinking 25 feet away from two to 12-year-olds, correct?
Yep. Just like at Short Beach with the playscape next to the pavilion.
How far is the playscape from Pavilion Number One and the playground?
I don't know the distance. I'm just saying that it's, I, I understand what you're saying.
It's at least a football...
I, I understand completely what you're saying.
Yeah. And that's a concern that I have, is that we're, first of all, allowing such a big pavilion in an area, an open space area, as I look at it, that should remain an open space. This is the only open space in the south end of Stratford. I live there, so I know. You've got Bird's Eye, very active recreational location. Johnson, very active recreational location. Wood End Road, very active. You've got the playground at Columbus. At the Gregory Circle, there's a playground there that's pretty active. The only open space in the south end is Juliet Low. And what this does is turn it into another very active recreational space and takes away from the community open space. And I know that Sismita has given us her report on how this affects or is effect, how it works with the POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development. But I'd like to point out, at least, let's see. It's page 10, Policies. "The town will strive to maintain and increase quality open space on both public and private lands. The objective is to promote the preservation of opens, natural open space, and number five is to continue to strive to reach open space goal of 15 percent." So I look at this as we're taking away the open space from the neighborhood.
May I add something?
Sure.
I don't mean to contradict you, but the open space definition is different from the park definition. Open space is natural open space that is not used for any recreational purposes, but just, you know, kept as an open space for preservation purposes only.
That's what this is right now.
In this case, this is a Juliet Low park, right? Or is it Juliet Low open space?
There, the name says park, but... There, the name says park, but there's nothing there.
It's a town of Stratford Park.
But there's nothing there, so it's open space.
It doesn't qualify as open space because there is no floodplains, wetlands, forested lands that are impassable, and that's the definition of open space.
Mr. Watson?
I believe that the town of Stratford includes all the parklands as part of its open space.
I believe so.
I think that in our...
We classify that as parks and open space. Parks are separate from open.
Or the state, when we have to give our required open lands, we include our parklands. Because we have so little truly open lands in this town.
I don't mean to contradict your opinions here. It's fine how you understand it, but in general, the P O C D defines open space differently. And I completely, I support what Pat is trying to do here, bring a meaningful discussion to this, and I'm all in favor of this. And there are some really valid concerns addressed here, but it's just that the P O C D doesn't look at open space as something where people can actually walk on and, you know, use that. Open space is natural open space, that's all.
Renee, is the town amenable to going back and taking the comments that have been made here by the public and redoing this plan?
I believe so.
To accommodate and bring it back for a final eight-twenty-four review?
I have no idea. I mean, I know they would like to incorporate the comments that they've heard. I know we've discussed them. So I can't speak for everybody and say we'd come back for another. I don't know what the process is, but, yeah, I know that they wanted to take the comments into consideration.
The statute, the one, the document that you showed earlier on eight-dash-twenty-four, that doesn't require, if you look at the one that you had on eight-dash-twenty-four process, it clearly states that from the date of referral, we have thirty-five days to render a decision, and if we don't, it automatically gets approved. So there is no chance to go back and re-present the same information or finalize or anything.
But if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But if it's going back, because the town council has deferred it to the planning commission, and the planning commission is sending back their decision to the town council, that's a place where, you know, you can ask for modifications, and when it's, again, presented before the town council, the council can postpone the vote because they're not bound by the statutory requirement there.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we could make a motion with modifications requested, and then that goes to the town council?
Yes.
And they can...
They can vote on that.
Yeah.
The other thing too regarding parking, Pat, I just wanted to reiterate again. The more cars you allow or the more parking you provide, the more you're attracting and drawing people from other parts of the town. Like if you start providing thirty-five spaces, more will come. Another fifty, seventy cars will come if you start, but I would encourage more bike parking instead. Providing bike parking would help, you know, then people know, oh, there is a bike parking there, so I don't have to drive my car, so I'll take my bike and go park there.
That's actually not what I'm suggesting, not to increase the parking area. What I'm saying is, based on the way it is designed now, the parking would be on the street, which, as people have said, is not very safe. I'm not advocating at all. I'm not, I don't even, I'm not advocating for the parking lot. So my concern is that the parking lot, as it is, will never be enough because the pavilion is too big and the splash pad really belongs somewhere else. And if that were to happen, the parking on the street would not be much different. And the parking at Johnson Academy, as we have heard, is quite sufficient. At least. So, you know, and I guess what I'm trying to get to, instead of there being a kind of a controversial or, you know, spudding heads, if we just make some recommendations in the form of a motion that hopefully will satisfy the neighborhood, because it's their park. It's not my park, although I'm in the neighborhood, but, you know, it's their park. So I think their thoughts should be overriding just about anything, as long as they make it safe. You know, and it makes sense if, and I don't think I've heard anything here tonight that does not, is not trying to make this project safe. You know, they're not saying move it to Johnson, then that's not safe. We know that it actually has a lot of pluses as far as safety is concerned. So I appreciate your saying that the town is listening.
There.
That we, that means a lot.
This just, this opened up a discussion because the pavilion is getting put in, and we were looking to solve, bring a better enhancement to a park besides just throwing just the pavilion there.
Right.
You could have added the splash pad, you could add the restrooms.
Yeah.
And the splash pad would have restrooms. The design at Johnson didn't include restrooms. So when you package it all up and you were looking to enhance the park, that's where the design came from. But yes, they are listening, and if you would like to suggest modifications, I'm sure they would redo them.
Okay, yeah, it's just... I just hope that we can articulate what we're, what we're looking for and that you understand what we're trying to do. Is your lie down for question, Mr. Watson? Oh, okay. All right, to try and move some of this along. If no one minds, I'd like to make a motion that we will approve the splash park and the picnic area with the following modifications, and only if the following modifications are done. Number one, the picnic area pavilion is made much smaller, twenty-by-twenty, with maybe four tables there. That the parking lot be eliminated, which will save you money, and that the splash pad with bathrooms, if you want to put the bathrooms there, be relocated to Johnson Academy that in a parcel of land that is between the ball fields and Sedgwick Avenue. I don't know if you got a plan from the community, but...
I did.
It shows it there. Did I miss any, is there any other things you'd like to? Between the ball fields and Sedgwick Avenue. Yeah, there's a space there that actually is on the plans. Anybody else? Any questions, Renee, of that? Anything that jumps out and says, oh, we can't do that?
Not from my perspective, no.
Okay. Hopefully you can go back and let the town know that the public, you know, has said, yeah, we love the splash park, we love having a small pavilion there. We just don't need the pavilion to overwhelm the area and leave open, I call it open space. It's a passive recreation park or passive park. And that there's a lot more, a lot better synergy if it's at Johnson Academy as far as everything else that goes on there. I hope, got all that? I hope that, you know, they understand that. Mr. Watson?
Just a final thought, Renee. Thank you so much for being gracious tonight. And what you said, Madam Chairman, I think actually answers a lot of my specifics. I think a lot of my specifics would be covered by doing simply what you're looking at. I think the important thing here is that the community did speak on this issue, and that I hope that we find a way to listen to them, and I hope that we can find the compromise that will make everybody happy in this area. It seems like there is one that can be made. I hope that that's, anything, if you go back, come back to us and say, how can we help you do that? And we will try everything we can to.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I need a second for the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from anybody? Say anything? He's a teacher. Renee, thank you very much. Sorry to put you on the spot with all the questions, but as you can see, there's a lot of people who care about this project, and they do want it to go forward. They just have some concerns, and they appreciate being heard by the administration. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so pass you now, it's probably three-zero. Okay. We are moving on. If you want to, we have a meeting, so we have to stay here. So if any of you would like to leave, if you could leave quietly and have your conversations out in the hallways, we would appreciate it, so we can get through this. And thank you, thank you very much for all coming.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Watson?
Can we move anything we have to vote on up early?
Say what?
Move anything we have to vote on earlier in the agenda?
Like what?
In case I have to get, I don't know what else we have to vote on.
Okay. I think, all we have to do is approve the minutes. I don't think...
My nursing, my nursing.
Well, okay, how about, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Let's start with that, get that over with.
Motion, I move that we approve the minutes.
Second? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you get paid. Okay, I'm just going to skip right on down to the digital signs. And I think we're just going to pass out information, and then maybe we can vote on it another time. Okay. Okay, again, we have a meeting that we have to conduct, so if you could, if you want to speak, you know, amongst yourselves, please do it out in the hallways as quietly as you can, so we can finish our meeting. Thank you very much.
So I did forward the signage regulation draft to the town engineer, and Jay Hibansky also had a chance to look at it, and they had some comments on the length of the draft. They feel like, well, this is a research white paper, and it very much helps, serves the purpose of why we want the regulation. But having this in entirety in the zoning ordinance might confuse people. So we want to just extract one or two paragraphs, synthesize everything, and put it in the regulation itself, and then have the other language taken out and, you know, have it as a supporting white paper to this and file it in our office. Having said that, I can walk through the sum of these comments that I received page by page very quickly. The first page, you know, the town engineer has asked me to look into DOT standards on digital signs, which I will look into. And the second paragraph on the dimming according to ambient light characteristics, all those should go in the contract and not in the zoning ordinance. And some of those definitions on changeable copy signs, sign-supporting structures, sign materials in construction, all these could be put under the definitions part of the zoning ordinance. And we would like to know clearly who's responsible for what. Is it IT planning or the mayor's office? So this is a conversation we should have at the mayor's office to, you know, discuss this. And it talks about, you know, how each, the brightness and has to be adjusted and all, the distances and all. The town engineer prefers this to be, you know, in the contract rather than in the zoning ordinance language. Just, you know, the zoning ordinance is more flexible and not as rigid, yes.
He's right, because those technologies change, and they will change in ten years.
Yes, and then there's other paragraphs, average viewer reaction time and all that, which is more technical. We don't know for sure, like, we can't implement it, but we don't have the capacity to implement it. So how do we put this in the language when we don't know how to implement it? Like, average viewer reaction time, we don't know how to measure, you know, when a car is driving by. So I would just leave that out, and I would just keep it simple. Whatever we can enforce, whatever we can implement is what we put in the ordinance. And even the last...
If I may make, I used to deal with communications technology, and scan rates are, will tell you based on complaints.
Okay.
So the people that put the message up or the people that read the message, you'll hear from it if it's too fast or too slow. So I agree with you. I wouldn't put any of that in there and let that work itself out, because it's simply, it's just a change in image change.
And the last example that is provided is also too, you know, too specific because we're only talking about two locations. One is the Paradise Green and the Town Hall location. So I think from our standpoint, when we write this digital sign regulation, we have to, you know, write it in a more simple and flexible way, so anybody can come. But the contract should specify, you know, this language, so that the contract implements it in a more rigid way.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
I was thinking about this really a lot, because we have not said anything about other signs in the area of these electronic boards. Are we, should we consider not allowing other signs as part of, that should probably be a part of our code, that we don't allow other signs in these two specific areas? Because otherwise, the problem we're trying to solve is just going to be, they're going to surround those with everything else.
I think that's something that should go in the ordinance, definitely, yes.
Do you want to take a stab at just the ordinance?
Yes.
And then we can work on the contract as we go through all of the departments and committees and such, okay? And that way we can move along. Okay, I would just like to say one thing real quick that, to get a feel from the commissioners, if they would like to, as a planning commission, have any input into the Shakespeare land, you know, and the task force. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And you will be invited to the public workshop on April first, and then there's another on April twenty-fourth, and then there are three subcommittee meetings that are going to happen. There was a press release that was just released yesterday. A lot of commission, commissions, groups, and individual organizations, artists are reaching out to us just to, you know, get involved, and we thought that is one common platform where everyone can come. The first public workshop on April first is going to be at the Bird's Eye Complex. I think it's around six o'clock. It'll be for two hours, so please come.
Okay.
Have your voice heard, even if not as a commission member, as a concerned resident, and...
And what's the second meeting?
The second one...
April twenty-fourth?
April twenty-fourth.
Good.
And in between, we have smaller meetings with seniors, with students, with artists, business members. So those are the daytime meetings.
Okay.
And then I also had another item packed.
Okay.
Can I talk about the affordable housing grant? We did not get it. But there is a public hearing on Thursday evening, if you want to go and get your voice heard before the town council. Unfortunately, I can't make it because I teach a class. Day after tomorrow, and if any of you can go and advocate for it.
Well, I had planned to go because I wanted to make sure that CDBG knows what the planning commission voted on tonight, because it's only two days away, so I wanted to update them, so I'll be there.
Just let them know why it's important.
March twenty-first, Thursday, here, yeah.
So you may want to let them know why it is important for us to do this study as a planning commission.
Okay.
If I'm not in Boston, I will try to come down, at least for part of that.
Good.
You're just doing the public speaking portion, correct?
Yeah.
So it's only six-thirty to seven, so I'll try to come.
Even the coastal resiliency plan implementation did not get through. We requested twenty thousand dollars for it. We were not approved even for that, so we have to really advocate for it before the town council, because the subcommittee voted down. Jay Hibansky and I went and testified before the subcommittee, but it was not picked up.
Okay, and we can also talk to the town council and get funding through the town as opposed to CDBG. You got two pots. Try them both.
Yes, and I will send you... Yes, and I will send you the electronic copies of both applications, so you have it when you're going before the council. And I'm sorry I can't be there, I really wanted to be there, but I teach a class and I have 28 students waiting for me that evening.
I think you got to talk to them.
Yes.
A planning class?
Yes, I teach sustainable urban planning in University of New Haven.
Oh.
Okay. I would like to add Shakespeare Task Force on here in case we have some comments.
Yeah, and I can report it to you all, and you can comment on that.
Yeah. Just, I also know that Mr. Sempt mentioned after one of the meetings that he is interested in making some suggestions. So, you know, as an individual, it's one thing, but as a planning commission, I think we should also have, you know, a stance or an, or input into-
Certainly, yeah.
-what the task force is discussing.
So, again, the purpose of these workshops is only to gather what residents want, and it will not be like, if you like something and Mr. Sempt doesn't like that, it'll still be counted.
Yeah.
It'll be categorized as-
Pros and cons.
There's options, various options, and then just present it. So I'd be happy to bring back everything that's discussed at all these meetings to the commission and report back on what's been happening on these sessions.
Excellent, okay. Nothing really on a text amendment, right?
No, I mean, that's something I want you to discuss, whether you want to discuss this further or table this for another two, three months before we finish up digital signs and then come back to it.
Let's table it, okay? And I know it was a long public hearing, and I appreciate, especially Mr. Watson, you hanging in there and even coming tonight, because I know-
Thank you for coming.
Personally, you, you've got a lot on your plate right now, so I appreciate very much your coming, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Vigliotti, Mr. Watson seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Valuable.[1794.57]